वेलिपड़त्तले विशेषम् मून्रामधिकारम् 24वां वसनते ओरि विसय नाम वासिक्य केटकल्लाम्
Let us once again here the book of Revelation Chapter 3 verse 21
नान जयंगोंडे एन पिदाविनुडी सिंगासनतिले अवरोडे कोड़ा उक्कार्नद्दु पोले जयंगोलिगरवन एवनो अवनुम एनुडी सिंगासनतिले एन्नोडु कोड़ा उक्कारुम्बडीके अरुल सेवे
To him that overcomeeth will I grant to sit with my in my throne even as I also overcome and then sat down and my father in the throne
कथुरुड़िया परिसूत नामत्तुके महिमे उड़ावदाह
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
नान जयंगोंडे एन पिदाविनुडी सिंगासनतिले अवरोडे कोड़ा उक्कार्नद्दु पोले जयंगोलिगरवन एवनो अवनुम एनुडी सिंगासनतिले एन्नोडु उक्कारुम्बडी नान अवनके अरुल सेवे
Even as I also overcame and I am sat down with my father in his throne to him that overcomeeth will I grant to sit with me in my throne
कथुरुड़िया परिसूत नामत्तुके महिमे उड़ावदाह
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
आवियानवर सभाइलुक्क चोलुगरदाने ओबरु तूदिलुम नाम पार्कुम्बडुदे कडैसीआगे अंद सभय जयंगोल्ला वेंडुमेन्बदिल अवर गवनमुल्लवराय इरुकरार
In each and every message given by the spirit of God to the church he is very careful to so that the every person, every church should overcome
आरंभतिले सिलसभाइलुमात्रमे कानपट्टद
Initially there were only few churches
अपोजलाकी योवान नाडुकट्टपट्रिंदार
Apostle John was exiled
अनाल देवन अवरकु पलविदमान तूदुकलाई ओबरु सभाइलुक्क कुरित नेलवरंगलाईयुम अवरकु दरिशनतिले वेलिपड़तिनार
But the Lord, the spirit of God had revealed in the vision about the state of each and every church
अन्रिक इरिंदे विशेषित सभाइलु येल सभाइलुके आवियानवर अवर मूलमाय तमुड़िय तिरुवलत्ते वेलिपड़त्ते अवर सित्तमानार
Of the churches that were existing on the day especially the spirit of God wanted to reveal his counsel, his will unto the seven churches
अदिले ओबरु सभाइनुड़िया कडैसी, ओबरु सभाइक्क मुरिया कडैसी वार्तये नाम पार्कुम्बडुदे जयंगोलिगरलाई कुरितदान ओर वार्तयागे अमैंद्रिंदाद
And the final words that were spoken to the church were concerning the overcomers
इदिल इरिंदे आवियानवरुड़िया सिंधै ओर मनिदन जयंगोल्ला वेंडुमेन्बदि एन्बदै नाम विलंगिकोले इयलु
From this we can understand that the mind of the spirit of God was that each and every man should overcome
ओबरु सभाइनुड़िया नेलवरमुम ओबरु विदंगलिल इरिंदाद
The state of each and every church were different
ओबरु सभाइनुड़िया कुराइलुम ओबरु विदंगलिल इरिंदाद
And the status of the churches were also different
कुराइल
Other shortcomings
अदेनरतिल ओबरु सभाइनुड़िया ऊलियंगलिलुम नेराइवुगल पलविदंगलिल कानपट्टद
At the same time, there were good qualities also in each and every church
आण्ड अवर अवरुल्ड़िया कुराइलुयुम सुटिकाटिनार
And the Lord pointed out their shortcomings and faults
अदेनरतिल अवरुडी नेराइविलुयुम अवर वेलिपड़त्ते तवरविलाई
At the same time, he did not fail to explore his greatness
इरण्ड़ कार्यंगलाईयुम अवर चोली कडैसीआगे अंदन्द सभाइलु जयिक्क वेंडुमेन्बदिले अवर गवनमुल्लवरागे इरिंदार
Mentioning these two things, two aspects he was very careful to consider the church that it should overcome
अप्पुड़ि सभाइलुकान तूदिले कडैसी सभाइनु तूदैतान नाम इप्पुडु वासिक्य केटाम
Now we heard read the message given unto the last of those seven churches
इंद लवोदीकिया सभय जयंगोल्ला वेंडुमेन्बदिले देवनुके अधिक गवनम इरिंदाद
God had more concern concerning the church in Loudesha that they should overcome
निंगल येल सभाइलुयु वीडुगलिले पोई पडितु पारिंग
He can read at home about the seven churches
इंद येल सभाइलुले लवोदीकिया सभयदान मिकवुम तरम तालिंदे ओर सभय
Of all the seven churches, the church in Loudesha was in a ratchet state
अनाल इंद सभाइय जयिक्क वेक्के वेंडुमेन्बदिले देवन गवनमुल्लवराय इरिंदार
But the Lord was more careful that this church should also overcome
प्रियमाने सगुदर्ने सगुद्रिये उनुडिया वाल्विले पलतोल्विगल वेलियरंगमागे मराइमुगमागे कानपटलाम अनाल देवनुन्ने वेरुथ्विट्तार एन्ट्रे नी ओरबोधुम एन्निविटकुड़ाद
Dear brother, dear sister, in your life also there may be open or inner secret failures but you should never consider that the Lord had forsaken you
यंगे मनिदन अधिक कुराइलुल्लवनागे इरुकरानो अंगे दान कृबय अधिकमागे कदंद वरुगरद एन्बदे नमक तेरिंदे ओर सत्यय
It is the truth well known unto us that where the man is much in wanting, much in lack, there the grace abounds
लवोदीकिया सभयाय अवर कईगलिविविड़ा मुडियम
The Lord could have very well washed his hand off Loudesha in church
अंद सभयाय अवर उदरिविड़ा मुडियम
He could have taken off that church
अंद सभयाय अवर पुरकनित्तुविड़ा मुडियम
He could have easily neglected that church
अंद सभयाय अवर तल्लिविड़ा मुडियम
He could have very well rejected the church
अंद सभयाय अवर न्यायिंदिर्कमुडियम
He could very well judge that church
अनाल अंद सभयाय अवर नेसितार
But the Lord loved that church
अंद सभाइकुले अवरय विड़ा मुडियाद अलविले अवरगल इरुके कदवय अडैत्रिंदार
They have shut the door so that he may not be able to enter
आनालुम आण्ड अवर अंद कदवय तट्टिकोंड्रिंदार एन्ट्रे अदरक मुंदे अवशनम सुटिकाट्टुगरद
In the previous verses it is mentioned that God still was knocking at their door
अर्मियाने सगुदर्ने सगुद्रिये नन्मने उनुडिया वाल्कीले नी ओरु वेलाई इदुवरै आण्ड अवरुकागे कदवय तरक्काद ओर नबरागे इरुकलाम
Dear brother, dear sister, dear friend you may be in your life not yet open the door for the Lord
उनुडिया मनसाची सीर्गटु पोई कानपटलाम
Your conscience may be profane
उंगलुकुले पलतोल्विगल वेलियरंगमागे कानपटलाम
Probably you may have outward failures
अनालुम इंद मुदल कुटतिले कत्तर इंद कुटतिल ओरु सिलरोडे पेस विरुम्बगरार
But still in this first meeting itself, the Lord wants to speak to certain people
इंद तोल्विगरमाने ओरु वाल्कय वेंडुमा एन्ट्रे निंगल एन्निकोंड्रिंदार
You might be thinking that do I need to live such a life of failure?
नमक जयंग कडैकुमा एन्कर ओरु केल्वी उंगलुकुल यललाम
You may have the question in your mind whether I will get the victory
आनालुम अंद लवोदीकिया सभाइनु कदवय तट्टिनालुम अडित्त वसनतिल अवर चोलुगरार नान इंद सभाइय जयिक्क विक्कमुडियागे क्रियेश्वरेन एन्ट्रे
Even though he was standing out and knocking at the door he says in the next verse unto the church in Loudesha, "I will make you overcome"
इंद माले वेलाइल उनुडिया मुदल कुटतिल नमुडिया वाल्विल नाम इंद नेलवरतिल इरिंदालुम नाम जयिक्क वेंडुमेन्बदिले देवन गवनमुल्लवराय इरुकरार
In this evening, in this first meeting, the Lord is very careful that we should overcome
वाल्कीले निंगल तोचु पोइरुकलाम
Probably you would have failed in your life
कुडुम्बा वाल्विल निंगल तोचु पोइरुकलाम
You might have failed in your family life
उंगुड़िया तोलिलिल निंगल तोचु पोइरुकलाम
In your business you would have failed
उंगुड़िया समुदायितिले, उंगुड़िया सभाइलुले, उंगुड़िया कुडुम्बा नन्बरगल मत्तिले निंगल तोचु पोने ओर नबरागे कानपटलाम
In the society, in the church, in the midst of your friends, you may be a man of failure
एन उंगुड़िया ऊलियंगलिल कोड़े निंगल तोचु पोइरुकलाम
Even in your ministries, you might have been a failure
आनालुम इंद मुदल कुटतिल उन कदवय तट्टुमुडियागे देवुड़िया वसनम पोराडिकोंड्रकरद
But still, the word of God is striving to knock at the door of your heart
अवरु मनिदन मर्बडियम जयिक्क वेंडुम
A man who had fallen shall overcome again
अप्पुड़ि जयिताल एन पिदाविन सिंगासनतिले नान उक्कार्नद्दु पोले एनुडिया सिंगासनतिले अवन उक्कारुम्बडी नान अवनके अरुल सेवे एन्ट्रे आण्ड अवर अंगे पेसुगरार
The Lord says here, "If he overcomes as I have overcome and sat in the throne of my father I will grant him to sit in my throne"
इंगे पिदाविन सिंगासनम एन्ट्रे ओर वार्तय इरुकरद
Here we read about the throne of the father
अडित्त यसु चोलुगरार एनुडिया सिंगासनम एन्ट्रे ओर वार्तयुम अवर चोलुगरार
Then Jesus speaks about his own throne
इंद इरण्ड़ सिंगासनंगलुकुम ओरु मनिदन पोगवेंडुमानाल अवनके इरुक्कवेंडियत तगदी अवन जयंगोंड अवनाय इरुक्कवेंडुम
If a man is to reach up to these two thrones he should have the state of being an overcomer
इंद्रिक मनिदन जयिक्क प्रयासपड़गरान अनाल तोचु पोगरान
Today, man is striving to overcome but still he fails
इंद्रिक पुदियर्पाट्ति सभाइले परिसूत आवियानुड़िया उदुवियोड़ मात्रमे ओरु मनिदन जयंगोल्ला इयलु
In the New Testament church, with the help of the Holy Ghost only, a man can overcome
ओबरु मनिदनुम सिंगासनतिले कोण्डु पोई सेयरकपड़ा वेंडुम एन्बदुदान पुदियर्पाट्ति सभाइनु नोक्मुम आण्ड अवरुड़िया तिट्टमुमागे इरुकरद
The plan of God and the purpose of the New Testament church is to make each and every man to overcome
सिंगासनम एन्डु चोन्नोड़ने नाम देवुड़िया सिस्टीपय नोकी पार्कवेंडियद अवस्यमागे इरुकरद
The word throne makes us to look upon the creation of the Lord
आदियागमम् मुदलामधिकारम् मुदलाम वसनम् नमक एल्लारुकुम ओरु तेरिंददाने ओरु वेद पगदी
The scripture portion, the book of Genesis first chapter, first verse is a well-known portion to us
आदिले देवन वानत्तययुम भूमिययुम सिस्टितार
In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth
इरु एल्लारुकुम तेरिंददाने ओरु वार्तय
This is a verse known, well-known to everyone
तमलिल वानम एन्डु चोलीरिंदालु मत्तम मोलिहिलिले अदु परलोकम एन्डु सुटिकाट्टपट्रिंदार
Even though in Tamil it is mentioned as sky, in other languages it is mentioned as heaven
देवुड़िया सिस्टीपिल् मुदलावद्दु परलोकम इरिंदागे नाम विलंगिकोललाम
We can understand the creation first, the heaven figured
मुदलावद्दु नान्दिन्द सिस्टीपय उंगुल्कु सुटिकाट्टुगराय
I will explain the creation first unto you
मुदलावद्दु देवुड़िया सिस्टीपिल् वानम परलोकमागे इरिंदाद
First, the heaven, the firmament was heaven
इन्नुम सरियागे चोलपोनाल
So to say
यसाया आरुवत्ती आरु उन्नरिन्बडी पार्कुम्बडुदे
According to Aisha 66, chapter first verse
इंद वानम एनकु सिंगासनम एन्ट्रे आण्ड अवर पेसुगरार
The Lord speaks that the heaven is my throne
अप्पुड़ि अनाल देवन वानत्ते सिस्टितार एन्डु चोन्नाल अदुनुड़िये इन्नोरु पोरुल देवन सिंगासनते सिस्टितार एन्ट्रे अर्थम
Therefore, it means when God created the heaven, it means he had created a throne
अडित्त आगे यरेमिया मून्रामधिकारम् 17वां वसनते पार्ताल
Then Jeremiah 3, chapter 17, verse 1
अन्नाट्किलिले अवरगल यरिसलेमय कत्तुरुड़िया सिंगासनम एन्डु चोलुवार
In those days, they will call the city of Jerusalem as the throne of God
वानत्ते, परलोकत्ते, सिंगासनत्ते, यरिसलेमय कत्तर मुदलावद्दु सिस्टितार अदुदान अवरुड़िया सिंगासनम एन्ट्रे नाम विलंगिकोल्ला वेंडुम
We have to understand that the Lord created the heaven first, Jerusalem, which is the throne of God
वानत्तिल उण्डानविगल अनैथुम अंगे सिस्टिक्कपड़गरद
All that were made in the heaven were created there
कथुरुड़िया परिसूत नामत्तुके महिमे उड़ावदाह
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
अप्पुड़ि अनाल देवुड़िया मुदल-मुदल सिस्टीपय सिंगासनम एन्ट्रे नाम विलंगिकोल्ला इयलु
From this we can understand that the first, very first creation of the Lord is the throne
इंद सिंगासनतिल कोण्डु पोई मनिदनय अवर निरुत्तुमुडियागे इरुत्तुमुडियागे अवर तनुडिया मनदिले ओर सित्तम ऐत्रिंदार
The Lord had the plan, the will in his mind to place man, to make man sit on the throne
इंद सिंगासनमदान अवरुड़िया मनदिले इरिंददाने दम अवर आदित्तीर्मानाम
This was the initial resolution found in the mind of God
अवरुड़िया सिस्टीपिले इंद सिंगासनमुम अंद यरिसलेमुमदान अवरुड़िया मनदिले कानपट्टे ओर दरिशनाम
In creation, the vision of the Lord was to have this heaven and the throne, the Jerusalem
इंद सिंगासनतुके तनुडिया सायिलिन्बडियुम, तनुडिया रूपतिन्बडियुम उरुवाक्कपट्टम मनिदनय कोण्डु सल्ला वेंडुमेन्बदि अवरुड़िया तिट्टमागे इरिंदाद
It was his plan to take man who was made in the image and likeness of God to this throne
इंद सिंगासनतुके इंद मनिदन वरवेंडुमानाल
If man is to come to this throne
अवन वालर्ची अडैयवेंडिदर इरुकरद
He has to grow
अवनुकुले पल पनिविडया आठकल अवनके वेले सिय्यवेंडिदर इरुकरद
Many persons have to minister him
ओरु पूरनत्तय अवन संदिक्कवेंडिदर इरुकरद
He has to reach unto perfection
अदरक पिन्बे अवन इंद स्थानतुके कोण्डु वरपड़गरान
Then only he will be brought to this state
इवेगलुक मत्तिले नाम इन्नोरु सिंगासनते इप्पुडुसिंधिक्क पोगराम
In between, we are going to consider another throne
वेलिपड़त्तल इरण्ड़ आमधिकारम्
Book of Revelation, second chapter
पदिमून्राम वसनते नाम पार्कलाम
Thirteenth verse, let us read
वेलिपड़त्तल इरण्ड़ पदिमून
2:13 of the book of Revelation
उन क्रियेगलयुम सात्थानुडी सिंगासनम इरुक्रे इडत्तील नी कुड़ियरुक्रदयुम, नी एन नामत्ते पच्चिकोण्डरुक्रदयुम सात्थान कुड़ियोण्डरुक्रे इडत्तिले उंगलुकुले एनकु उन्मयुल्ला साचियाने अंतिपा इन्बवन कोल्लपट्टन नाट्कलिलुम एन्ने पच्चु विस्वासते नीम अर्धलियामल इरिंददयुम अरंदिरुक्रे
I know thy works and where thou dwellest even where Satan's seat is and thou holdest fast my name and hast not denied my faith even in those days wherein Antipas was my faithful martyr who was slain among you where Satan dwelt
नानी पोडुदे कत्तुरुड़िया सिंगासनते सिस्टीपय कुरितु उंगुल्कु चोलिकोंड्रिंदै
I was telling you about the throne of God, the creation
अनाल इवेगलुक मत्तिले वेलिपड़त्तले इन्नोरु सभाइय कुरित ओरु वार्तयिले सात्थानुड़िया सिंगासनम एन्कर ओरु वार्तय सोलपट्रिंदार
In between, in the message given to your church, here it is mentioned about the seat of Satan
सात्थानुड़िया सिंगासनम, सात्थान कुड़ियरुक्रे इडम एन्ट्रे इरण्ड़ वार्तय अंगे चोलपट्रिंदार
There, two phrases are mentioned, "where Satan dwelt" and "where Satan's seat is"
देवन ओरु सिंगासनते सिस्टितरुक
When God had created a throne
इंगे इंद पुदिया नबर यार
Who is this new person?
इंद सात्थान इन्बवन यार
Who is this Satan?
अवनुड़िया सिंगासनम एन्ट्राल यन्न
What is his seat?
मुदलावद्दु येद्रिये कुरित ओरु सरियाना अरिव नमक इरुक्कवेंडियद अवस्यम
First, we should have a proper understanding about our enemy
इंद्रिक अनेक कृष्टवरलुके इंद सात्थान एन्ट्रे वार्तयुड़िया अंद नबर यार एन्ट्रे अवरलुके तेरिकरदलाई
Many Christians in these days do not know who is this Satan
ओरु सिलर तंगुड़िया वाल्कीले सिलर प्रचनेगलाई चोलुगरार
Some people tell their problems in their lives
अदरक कारणम एन्नेमेन्ट्रे अवरलुके तेरियवे इलाई
They do not know what is the reason for them
एन्नदाल अवरलुके येद्री अवरुड़िया कंगलके अवन पुलप्पडुवधिलाई
Because their adversary is not visible to their eyes
अंद येद्री कन्ने कुपुलप्पट्टाल अवन नेरुक्नेर येद्रकलाम नै अदावु जयिक्कलाम इलावट्टाल तोरकलाम
If the adversary is visible, then they can fight with him they can either overcome or be defeated
इंद्रिक अनेकरुके उन्मयान येद्री यार एन्ट्रे तेरिकरदलाई
In these days, many people do not know the true adversary
अनाल इंद उन्मयान येद्रियोडे अवरगल तोलमय पाराटी अवनय वनंगी तंगुड़िया वाल्नाट्कलाई मनिदन कुलम इलंदुकोंड्रकरद
But the mankind is friendly with this adversary and they are having friendship, a closeness with him, and they are losing their life
देवन ओरु सिंगासनते सिस्टितरुक सात्थान यप्पुड़ि ओरु सिंगासनते एयरपड़त्ते इयलु
When God had created a throne, how can Satan make his own seat?
इंद बर्गमु सभय सात्थानुड़िया सिंगासनम इरुक्रे इडत्तिल इरुकरदाहगे नाम पार्कराम
We read here that the church in Bergamas was situated in a place where Satan dwelt
अंगे इरिंद्र जनंगल सात्थान कुड़ियोण्डरुक्रे इडत्तिल कुड़ियोण्डरुक्रदागे नाम पार्कराम
And we see the people of that place were dwelling where Satan dwelt
अनेक कृष्टवरलुके कोड़े सात्थान यार एन्ट्रे तेरियाद सात्थान अवलोदान मोत्तमागे सपिसास एन्डु चोली नेरित्तिवड़गराम
Many, even many of the Christians do not know who Satan is Generally, we say the devil and stop with that
इलावट्टाल विकर अंगल नमक उरोदमान वल्लमेगल एन्ट्रे नाम एड्डुत्ते नेरित्तिवड़गराम
And we consider the idols as the powers against us and stop with that
देवन ओरु सिंगासनते स्थाबितु अदिले मनिदनय कोण्डु पोई वेक्के अवर तिट्टमुड्रुकुम्बडुदे सात्थान ओरु सिंगासनते एयरपड़ती अदिले अवनय अवन आलुगय सेद्दे अवनका अडिमीआगे ओरु कुटत्ते मार्चे अवन मोयर्चिक्करान
When God had created a throne and wanting to make man sit there here Satan is making his own throne or seat and he wants to have a control over group of people
आविकुरिया कृष्टवरलंद्दु चोलुगरालुके कोड़े इंद सात्थान यार सात्थानुड़िया सिंगासनम एन्गे इरुकरद अदुनुड़िया ताकुदल एन्गे नमुड़िया वाल्कील इरुक्रदा एन्बदै अवरलुके कंडुबडिक्क मुडिकरदलाई
Even the spiritual Christians are not able to find out where is, who is Satan where is his throne, is there the effect of Satan's throne in their life?
मुदलावद्दु सात्थान यार
First, who is Satan?
उनुडिया येद्री यार
Who is your adversary?
उनुडिया रचिपुकु उरोदमान वल्लमय यदि
Which is the power working against your salvation
उन कुडुम्बत्तुकु उरोदमान सक्ती यदि
Which is the power working against your family
उनुडिया ऊलियतुके एद्रान वल्लमय यदि
Which is the power working against your ministry
अदुनुड़िया ताकुदल यन्न
What is its way of affecting you?
अदय नाम विलंगिकोंडाल दान सत्तुरुवय नाम मेर्कुले मुडियुम नमुड़िया वाल्विल नाम मुन्नेर इयलु
Only when we understand about that, we can overcome the adversary and we can progress in our spiritual life
मोत्ततिले सात्थान, सात्थान एन्डु चोली नाम अंद वल्लमय येद्रके इयलाद अवरलागवे अदय ओरु पूदकरमागे एन्नी नाम मराइंदुकोलुगराम
Generally, we say Satan, Satan, we are not able to oppose that and we are hiding ourselves, thinking that it is great like a giant
इंद वानम एन्कर सिंगासनते अवर उण्डाक्किन पोडुदे अवर परलोकतिले इलावट्टाल ओरु आलुगयाय अवर एयरपड़त्तुगरार
When God created the throne in heaven, he also made dominion in heaven
दूदरगलुके एन्ट्रे ओरु आलुगय अंगे एयरपड़त्तपड़गरद
And there was a dominion given unto the angels
कोलोसियर 1:16 ले नाम इदे पार्कय इयलु
We can read about that in Colossians 1:16
सिंगासनंगलानालुम, तुरैत्तनंगलानालुम, अधिकारंगलानालुम कत्तत्तुंगलानालुम, एल्लाम अवरकेन्दुम, अवरे कोण्डुम सिस्टिक्कपट्टद
That, we read that whether be the thrones or the principalities or powers or dominions all things were created by him and for him
देवुड़िया अंद परलोकस सिस्टीपिले दूदरगल एन्कर ओरु सिस्टीपय अवर एयरपड़त्तुगरार अवरलुकेन्द्रे ओरु आलुगय, ओरु ऊलियम अवरलुकेन्द्रे ओरु तिट्टम देवनिनतिले इरिंदाद
God created, when he made the heaven, the throne he made the angels, they also were given the thrones, the dominion they were given a particular ministry
वानम एन्डु चोल्लुम्बडुदे अवर परलोकतिल कानप, नमुड़िया कंगलके कानपटादविगलाय अवर सिस्टितार
When it is mentioned about heaven, the Lord created the things which are invisible to our eyes
इप्पुडुन नाम वानत्ते नोकी पार्ताल स्पेसले ओरु कुरिकपट्टे एडंगल नमक तेरियर कुरिकपट्टत दूरम चेन्पड़गरद
When you look up towards the sky, you can see to some extent in the space
इन्नुम विंगानिगलाल आराची सिय्यपड़द इल्लक अप्पारपट्टे एवलो ओकार्यंगल वाणंगलिले मराइंद्रकरद
In the skies, there are so many things hidden which has not yet been explored by the saints
अनाल तान कानपट्टगरावेगल, कानपटादविगल एल्लामे अवर मूलमाय सिस्टिक्कपट्टद एन्डु नाम पार्कराम
That's why we read that all the things both invisible and invisible were created by him
सात्थानय देवन सिस्टितारा, अवनय अलित्तिविड़लामे एन्ट्रे ओरु सिलर पेसुगरार
One group of people are speaking, whether God had created Satan, he could have easily destroyed him
मनिदनके ओरु उन्नदमान इडत्ते कुडुपदे देवुड़िया तिट्टतिल इरिंदाद अंद सिंगासनतुका अवनय कोण्डु पोगवेंडुमेन्बदि देवुड़िया मनदिल इरिंदाद
It was the plan of God, the will of God, that man should be given an exalted place to take him to the throne
अदिले कोण्डु पोई सेयरकपड़कुड़िया मनिदनके पानीविडय सिय्यमुडियागे देव दूदरगल एयरपड़त्तपट्टार
The angels were made as the ministering spirits to help man to reach unto the throne
अवरुड़िया आरसिले सिंगासनंगल उण्डे, कत्तत्तुंगल उण्डे, तुरैत्तनंगल उण्डे, अधिकारंगल उण्डे
In their government also, there were thrones, there were dominions, there were principalities and powers
कत्तर इंद दूदरगलाई पूर्णर्गलागे सिस्टितार
God created the angels as perfect beings
इन्नोरु विदतिले पार्कुम्बडुदे सिलय एडंगलिले अवरगल मनिदन रूपंगलिले चेन्पडुवार माला पलय एडंगलिले अवरगल कंगलकु पुलप्पडुवधि इलाई
If you read through the scriptures, you can see the angels visible to the eyes of man in the form of man, in other places they were invisible
इंद दूदरुड़िया सिस्टीपय कुरितु वेदम चोल्लुम्बडुदे इंद दूदरगलाई अवर कार्त्यगलागे सिस्टिक्करार एन्डु चोलपट्रिंदार
The word of God says about these angels as the winds
अनाल मनिदनो देव दूदरिलुम सच्च सिरियवनागे सिस्टिक्कपट्टाव
But man was created a little lower than the angels
अवन मनिनाले उरुवाक्कपट्टाव
He was made of the dust of the ground
अनाल देवुड़िया सायिलिन्बडियु, रूपतिन्बडियुम देवनमनय सिस्टित्रिंदार
But God had created him in the image and likeness of God
इवनको ओरु वालर्ची उण्ड
He has a growth
इवनुकुले देवुड़िया चीव आत्मा आलुगय सेद्दत
The living soul was ruling over in his life
इवनको ओरु वालर्ची उण्ड, इवनको ओरु पूरनम उण्ड
He has a growth and a perfection to reach
इवनको ओरु आलुगय उण्ड
He had his own dominion
इंद आलुगयाय अवन निलैत्रिंदाल
If he had abided in the dominion
अवनकु मरणम इल्लाद ओरु वाल्व
He would have lived a life without death
ओरु कुरिकपट्टत कालंगल अंद वाल्कील अवन नीडित्रिंदाल
For a certain period if he had continued in that life
देवनय पोले नन्मय दीमे अरियकुड़िया ओरु वाल्व
He could have got the life like God, knowing, discerning between
इवेगलुल्ला अंद देवुड़िया मनदिल इरिंदे देवुड़िया तिट्टंग
These were the plans of God in the mind
अनाल इंद देव दूदरगल अप्पुडिपट्ट अवरलाल
But the angels were not like that
इवरगलाई कत्तर नेराइवुल अवरलाग वेत्रिंदार
The Lord had made them perfect
अनाल इंद मनिनाल उरुवाक्कपट्टम मनिदरगलुके सेवय सिय्यवेंडियद एन्बदु देवुड़िया तिट्टम
But the plan of God was that the angels should minister unto man who was made from the dust of the ground
एबरे एरकलन नेरुबम् मुदलामधिकारम् 14वां वसनम्
Hebrews 1:14
रचिपय सुदंद्रिक्के पोइकरवरुगल इनिमित्तमागे ऊलियाँ चय्यपडिके अवरगल इल्लारुम अणपपड़ुम पनिलुड़िया आविकरा, आविकलां इरुकरारगल अल्लाव
Are they not whole ministering spirits? Send for to minister for them who shall be heirs of salvation
इंद दूदरगल रचिपय सुदंद्रिक्कपोगर इलावट्टाल सिंगासनते सुदंद्रिक्कपोगर देवुड़िया पुल्लेगलुके पनिविडय आविह
Here, we read that the angels were the ministering spirits unto the children of God who shall inherit the salvation
यार सिंगासनते सुदंद्रिक्कपोगरानो एन्दो ओरु ऊलियन सिंगासनते सुदंद्रिक्कपोगरानो एन्दो ओरु देवुड़िया पुल्लय, देवुड़िया सिंगासनते सुदंद्रिक्कपोगरानो अवनके सेवय सिय्यमुडियागे एयरपड़त्तपट्टा अवरगले इंद देव दूदरगल
Whichever is the person, whichever is the servant of God or whosoever is a child of God reaching unto heaven these angels were to minister unto him
इवरलुकुले अधिकारंगल इरिंदाद, आलुगयल इरिंदाद
They had their own powers and dominions
केयरुबिंगल एन्कर ओरु कुट्टम इरिंदाद
There were a group called cherubim
सेराबिंगल एन्कर ओरु कुट्टम इरिंदाद
And one group were called as seraphim
गाबरियल चलमिले ओरु कुट्टम इयंगिनद
Another group of angels were under the leadership of Gabriel
मिकावलुड़िया चलमिले ओरु कुट्टम इयंगिनद
And another group of angels were under the archangel Michael
अधिकालिंगिन मगनाकी विडिविल्ली एन्कर राना लूसिफर एन्ट्रे पेरले ओरु कुट्टम इयंगिनद
Another group were under Lucifer, the morning star
इप्पुड़ि पलविदंगलिले देवन अवरलुके आलुगयल, अधिकारंगल, ऊलियंगल एल्लामे देवन कुडुत्तोवैत्रिंदार
In this way, the Lord had given them the powers, the dominions and ministries
तमुड़िया पुल्लेगल पाठिक्कपडुम्बडुदे अवुड़ि युथंगलाई नरत्ता मिकावले कत्तर अवुड़ि सेरिंदा दूदरगलाई एयरपड़त्तिवैत्रिंदार
When the children of God are affected the Lord God made the Michael, the archangel, to fight on their behalf
दानियल पत्तामधिकारम् पदिमून्राम वसनतिले निंगल इदे पार्कय इयलु
You can read about that in book of Daniel 10, chapter 13, verse
अडित्त दानियल्ले पार्कुम्बडुदे गाबरियल एन्कर तूदनय नर्चयिद्या अर्विक्कुड़िया ओरु पगदीय अवन्डय कैयिले देवन कुडुत्तोवैत्रिंदार
In the book of Daniel, we can read about the angel Gabriel who is to give the message from God, the good tidings
यसाया आरामधिकारम् 2वां वसनतिले इंदु पार्ताल नाम के सेराबिंगल एन्कर ओरु कुट्टम देवनय महिमेपड़त्तु कुड़िया ओरु दूदरगलुड़िया कुट्टतय नाम पार्कलाम
In Aisha 6, chapter 2, verse we read about another group of angels called seraphim their work is to glorify God always
आदियागमम् मूनामधिकारम् 24वां वसनते पार्ताल अंद सुदरोली पट्टे तोड़, केयरुबिंगलाई वेत्त अंद येदेन तोटते देवन पादुकत्ता
In the book of Genesis, 3, 24, verse we read, "The Lord preserved or protected the garden of Eden with the sword of turning light with the angels' cherub"
इवरलुके पलविदमान ऊलियंगल इरिंदाद त्रियमान
Such ways they were having different ministries
मनिदरलुके युथतिलुके उदुविसिय्यमुडियागे
In order to help men in the fighting
दुक्कमान नेरंगले नर्चयिद्या अर्विक्कमुडियागे
At the time of grief, to give them the good tidings
मनिदरलाई कावल सिय्यमुडियागे
To protect men
देवनय महिमेपड़त्तुमुडियागे
To glorify God
इप्पुड़ि ओबरु विदमान खूट्टंगलाई देवन एयरपड़त्तिवैत्रिंदार
In this way, God had established different groups of angels
इवरलुके वल्लमय बराकरममलाम उण्ड
And they had their own power and might
वेलिपड़त्तल पदिन्तामधिकारम् मुदलाम वसनते पार्कुम्बडुदे
When you turn to 18, chapter 1, verse of the book of Revelation
ओरे ओरु तूदन यरंगिवंद्दु बुलु भूमियुम प्रकासितद
When one angel came down, the whole earth was lighted
अप्पुडिपट्ट ओरु प्रकासम अंद तूदरलुके कुडुकपट्रिंदाद
Such a brightness was given unto angels
यसाया 28:2 पार्कुम्बडुदे
When you read 28:2 of the book of Aisha
आण्ड अवरतिले त्राणियुल ओरु मनिदन इरुकरान अवन वर्णुडुदे संगार पुसल बोला वंद एल्लावत्युन तल्लिविड़वान ओरे ओरु तूद
There, one angel is having, the Lord is having he is mighty and strong one, he can destroy as a storm
103 संगीतम् 20वां वसनते पार्कुम्बडुदे
103:20, if you read
अवरुड़िया वार्तेगलाई केट्टु सैलबड़गर बलत्त सौरिय वानगलाकीय तूदरगले एन्डु चोलपट्रिंदार
There it is mentioned about the angels who are the mighty spirits who do according to the word of God
एवलो मकिमय इरिंदालुम
Whatever be the glory
एवलो वेलय ओलिये अवरलु कुडुत्तालुम
They may give so much brightness
एवलो त्राणियुल अवरलागे इरिंदालुम
They may be mighty and strong
एवलो बलत्त सौरिय वानगलाय इरिंदालुम
They may be the strong ones
देवन अवरगलाई पनिविडय कारणागवे वेत्रिंदार
The Lord is keeping them as ministering spirits
तनुडिया सायिलिन्बडियु, तनुडिया रूपतिन्बडियु उरुवाक्कपट्टम मनिदन अवुड़ि वाल्नालील पोगर पादेगलिले अवनकु उद्वियुम अवनकु पादुकापुम, अवनके एल्लाम कुडुत्त अवन न सिंगासनतुके कोण्डु वर वेक्कमुडियान देवुड़िया तिट्टतिल इंद दूदरगल पनिविडय सिय्यमुडियागे देवनाल एयरपड़त्तपट्टा अवरग
In the plan of God, to bring man who was made in his own form and likeness to bring him unto the throne to protect him in his way, to support him, to encourage him these angels were given as ministering spirits
निंगल पलयर्पाट्लम्य उनुड़िया सेवयाय पार्कलाम
You can see the service of angel, ministry of angel in the Old Testament
पुदियर्पाट्लम्य उनुड़िया सेवयाय निंगल पार्कलाम
In the New Testament also, you can see the ministry of the angels
आपराहमुड़िया वीट्टिके देवनुम इरण्ड़ तूदरगलुम वंदार
Unto the tent of Abraham, the Lord, and two other angels came
लोत्तिन वीट्टिके इरण्ड़ तूदरगल वंदार
To the house of Lot, two angels went
अंगलाम तूदरगल तत्रुमागे अवरलुके वेलिपट्टार मनिदरगल पोले वेत्तेन्पट्टार
There, the angels were visible in the form of men
अवुड़ि वीडुगलेपुसित्तार कुडित्तार
They ate and drank in their home
इसरेवेल पायनतिले अंद जनंगलाई काकुमुडियागे ओरु तूदनय कत्तर मुन्नागे नडक्कवैत्त
The journey of the Israelites through the wilderness the Lord set an angel to go forth before them
एलिया ऊलियतिले तदुमारी, ओर इडत्तिले उलिंदुकोंडा बुडुदे कत्तर अवनके अप्पमुम तन्नीरुम कुडुक्कुडियागे ओरु तूदनय अनिप्नार
When Elijah stumbled in his ministry and hid himself the Lord sent an angel to encourage him, to give him bread and water
दानियल सिंगगबीकुले पोण्डुबुडुदे ओरु तूदनय अनिप्पि अंद सिंगत्तिन वायय कत्तर कट्टिनदागे वेदम सुटिकाट्टुगरद
The word of God points out that when Daniel was cast into the den of lions the Lord sent an angel to bind the mouths of the lions
एसेक्या अविन कालतिले ओरु बरिया मुच्चिगे एयरपड़त्त एसेक्या तदुमारीनान, यसाया तिरकदरिसियोड अवन इनेंद जबित्त बुडुदे कत्तर ओरु तूदनय अनिप्नार लक्षत्तुकम अधिकमान मनिदरगलाई अवन संगरितान
In the days of the reign of King Ezekiel when there was a great siege around him he prayed unto God along with prophet Aisha and the Lord sent an angel who had slain more than 185,000 persons
एन्नदान वल्लमयुम, सक्तियुम, अधिकारमुम इरिंदालुम इवरगल मनिदरगलुके सिंगासनतुकु पोग कुड़िया जनंगलुके रेलेक्कार
Even though they had all this dominion, power and strength
Even though they had all this dominion, power and strength, they are still the ministering spirits unto man who is to go unto the throne. In the New Testament, we can see an angel speaking unto Mary about the birth of Jesus. And an angel told about the birth of John the Baptist. When Jesus cries after the trial temptation by Satan, when he was fainting, there were angels there to strengthen him. When Lord Jesus prayed in the garden of Gethsemane and sweat drops of blood on the ground, an angel came down to strengthen him. When the women came to the sepulchre of Jesus with the question in their mind, who shall take out the stone for them, there was an angel who took out the stone and sat upon it. When the people were waiting for healing in the pool of Bethesda, an angel will come down and trouble the water, the first one getting into the water will be healed. When Apostle Peter was fettered in the prison, when the church people were praying fervently for him, the Lord sent an angel and delivered him out of prison. When this poor man, that beggar Lazarus died, the angels took him and led him to paradise, which was the bosom of Abraham. In this way, in the Old Testament as well as in the New Testament, many things are quoted to show the ministry of the angels. Even though they were so mighty and strong, when the Lord commands, they will immediately obey and do the work. I have been telling you about the ministry of the angels which took place in the Old Testament and New Testament time. But when God revealed his plan. You have to minister man. When the angel came to know about the plan of God, that man will be reaching unto the throne of God and the angels have to minister unto him, he was upset. One group of angels were upset with this news. Because they were so powerful. In order to minister these men, God had filled these angels with so much of strength and power. And the Lord made him to walk in the midst of fiery stones. He had his own throne. He had his dominion. He had principality. He had the power. When he was having all these things, when it was shown unto him, he has to minister unto man who is made from the dust of the ground, the question arose in his mind, should I do that? When God gives in these days wisdom, knowledge, understanding, gifts of God and the skill to do everything, they are failing to do for the benefit of man. First of all, a child of God needs to have the understanding that everything was made by God. It is the grace of God that we are having this strength. God has given us this good learning. If God has given us a good life, it is the mercy of God. If God has given us good wealth and fortune, it is the grace of God. If the Lord had given a peaceful life, then it is the great compassion and kindness of God. When we realize that we who are nothing, the Lord had given so much greatness, we shall humble ourselves more and more. Here only, many in the groups of the angels stumbled. In book of Ezekiel twenty eight chapter, it is pointed out, the greatness, the power and the principalities and the strength and the dominion that the angels had were pointed out. You can read about that in the twenty eight chapter thirteen verse onwards. You see the glory that covered him. Every precious stone was like covering, the sardias, the tapas, the diamond, the burial, the onions and jasper and sapphire and emerald and carbuncle and gold. Workmanship of the tablets were made in you. Toward the anointed cherub that covered. I placed you upon the holy mount of God. You are walking in the midst of stones of fire. He had forgotten that everything was the grace of God, the compassion of God. Even our believers, when they are getting rich or wealthy, they forget from whom they have received it. When a guard maid, handmade in the house of Abraham, when she got a good life, she stumbled. She was handmade only. But she tried to become the wife of Abraham. That is a mistake that she committed. In the proverbs, it is mentioned, if a woman who is an handmade tries to become the wife, the earth will not sustain it. Even though, all that much of glory, the covering, the preciousness that were covering him on his power and might were mentioned in the book of Ezekiel twenty eight chapter, he is still a servant, a ministering spirit unto man. I tell this incident in all places. I know a brother. I was a junior brother, I attended meeting. I attended a small meeting. In that meeting, that was conducted in. And the meeting was going on in a believer's house. When I went to that meeting, there were around forty people seated. Suddenly a brother came. I wondered on seeing him. I was glad that he is a new believer. Because he was clothed in silks. And he was wearing a silk shirt. He had a big bracelet in his hand. He had a big golden chain. And though he won by him was sweeping the floor. When on seeing him, I thought that a new soul had come, therefore I will change my subject of my message. The meeting ended. I encouraged that new person. When I asked about him. He was a boy who earlier was, used to work in faithum. He was doing the electrical work in faithum, he was doing the menial jobs like laying the mats and all that, whatever the food in those days, it was much in difficulty, whatever the meager food given, he would eat and be satisfied. A believer, when he asked him, you are working so much in the faithum, do you want to go to a foreign country and work there, he used that chance and went there. Thereafter, his way of life, his way of walking, his way of speaks, everything became different. And he had come to such a stage that even though he is unworthy, he will pose himself as someone great. His color has changed so much, where he was putting on the fan and giving electrical connection, in the same church, he was wearing a silk dhoti and silk shirt and coming there. I pitied on him. Because he had got the wealth all and knew, he has stumbled. I didn't want to say this, but still, when he went the second trip to a foreign country where another person who was working in a level above him, let down a hammer, it hit on his head and died. The Lord will give you everything, but you should never forget that it was given by God. The angels, just because they were walking in the midst of the stones of fire, they should not forget God. You know what did he do? In Aisha fourteen chapter if you read. He was not even able to digest the concept that the throne is kept for this man. In the thirteen verse he says. I will ascend unto heaven. I will exalt my throne above the stars of God. It does, on the sides of north, there is Zion, I will make it my seat. I will ascend above the heights of the cloud and I will be like the most high. There only he started stumbling. When the wrong thought came in his mind, immediately the Lord rejected him. He had the thrones, the dominion, the principalities and powers, but he had to make use of all these things only to minister unto man. For example, a person has been made to work in a rich man's house. There is only one son. He is the heir unto all things. What will happen if the servant plans that this man is the heir unto all things, if I kill him, I will get all these things, that is what happened the mind of the angels on that day. Zion and Jerusalem, the throne, you man should not reach unto that, I have to get it, he thought that, immediately the Lord cast him out and he reached unto the heaven, he have reached unto the earth and till now, he is on the earth. From the day in which he fell on this earth, on that day onwards, his throne has been established in the earth. In till that moment, he heard in his mind, he was an angel of God, but when he thought against the plan of God, he became the adversary, the Satan, which in Hebrew tongue means an enemy. Aisha, the prophet says, oh, the morning star, the son of the morning, son of the dawn, he has been slain to fall down on the earth. On the day in which he fell on this earth, immediately he brought in his mind that this man should not reach unto the throne of God. The throne, which could not be attained by him, should not be attained by anybody else. Young man loves another girl. He expresses his desire. She is not accepting it. What does he do? What is his sadist mind saying? He is pouring the acid upon her, thinking that the girl, which is not his, should not become anybody else. He destroys her life and this is what we hear often and see often upon this earth. The plan of Satan is that the throne which he could not attain, should not be attained by anybody else. From that day onwards, he is working against the mankind. From that day onwards, his plan is to destroy the spiritual children of God. On that day, he was not a single one to fall down, a great group of, large number of angels fell on that day. And that's why I say, the people call them gods, but thirty-three crores of angels fell on that day. After the multitude of angels who were created to minister unto man, one great number fell down upon this earth and the earth is being corrupted by them. That's why it is written, in the first verse it is written, in the beginning God created heaven and the earth, in the second verse, in the book of Genesis first chapter, it says, the earth was without form and void. And it is written, the darkness was upon the waters and the spirit of God was moving on the water. His plan was that the mankind should not reach unto that heaven. The man should not reach unto the throne of the father. The man should not reach unto the throne of the son of God. That's why even today he is trying. In the garden of Eden, he came in the form of a serpent, today he is working against the mankind in many, many shapes. Even today, he is enticing with showing the wealth, I will give you this and that, and even some of our own people are beguiled by that. If you read in the book of Matthew, in the Gospel of Saint Matthew, four chapter eight and nine verses, we can see, Satan coming direct unto God, Lord Jesus and telling, I have all the glory of this world with me, if you fall down on earth with me, I will give them to you. The power of Satan, which was giving a wrong message unto Adam and Eve and beguiled them, made them to fall, even today, it is working against the people of God, beguiling them to fall. Even today, his power is striving against us. He will say, I will give you my glory. He will give you a good job. He will give you all wealth and facilities. Somehow he will divert your attention and forbid you from going unto the throne. If you read the life history of Sage Sundar Singh. இப்போ ரீட் த லைவ் ஹீஸ்டியா சேச் சுந்தர் சிங்
இமாலய மலைகிலிலே அவர் ஒர்நால் ஜெம்பமணிக்கொண்டுருந்து பொழுது
வென் ஹீ வாஸ் ப்ரேயிங் இன்னு ஹிமாரியன் மூண்டென்
சாத்தான் வந்தானா
ஒன் டே செய்தன் கேம் அண்டு ஹிம்
இவர் கண்ணெத்திரந்து பாத்தால் அப்படி தர்த்துருவாக சத்துருவல்லவே நிக்கிறது
வென் ஹீ ஓப்பன் ஹீஸ் ஐஸ் ஹீ கண் சீ த ப பவர் அப் த அட்வர்ஸரி
என்ன இங்க வந்துருக்கிறன் கேட்டாரா
ஹீ ஆஸ்ட் ஹிம் வாய் யூ ஆப் கம் ஹீர்
அவங்க கேட்டான் நீ என்னை இங்க உக்கான் ஜெம்பமணிட்டுருக்கிறன் கேட்டான்
அண்ட் ஹீ ஆஸ்ட் ஹிம் வாய் யூ ஆர் சிட்டிங் ஹீர் அண்ட் ப்ரேயிங்
நீ ஒரு அலகான சீக்கிய குடும்பத்தில் பிரந்தவன்
யூ ஆப் பான் அன்ன வாண்டர்ப்புல் சீக் பம்லி
உனக்குன்னு ஒரு பாரம்பரியம் இருக்கிறது
யூ ஹெவ் யூ அவர் ஒன் குட் ட்ரெடிஷன்
இப்போ போனாலும் ஒரு அருமியான வாள்கை இருக்கிறது
இவன் நோ இப்போ போனாலும் ஒரு அருமியான வாள்கை இருக்கிறது இவன் நோ இப்போ போனாலும் யூ வில் கெட் அ குட் லைவ்
நீ என்ன வந்து ஏசு ஏசுங்கிற இதுக்கு பின்னால போய் உன்னுடைய வாள்கை ஒன்றுமில்லாமலாகி இந்த இமாலயமலிலே ஜெபித்ததுனால் என்ன சாதித்துவிட்டாய்
அண்ட் யூ ஆர் சீங் ஜீசஸ் அண்ட் ஜீசஸ் யூ ஆர் வேஸ்டிங் அர் லைவ் வாட் யூ ஆப் அச்சீட் பை ப்ரேயிங் இன்னு ஹிமாரியன் மூண்டென்
இதனை வருஷா ஏசு ஏசுன்று சொன்னேன் உனக்கு என்ன லிப்ட் கிடச்சுருக்கிறது
சோமை இயஸ் யூ ஆர் தெல்லிங் ஜீசஸ் ஜீசஸ் வாட் இஸ் அ கிப் யூ ஆப் ரெசிவ
நான் உன்னை விஷேஷமாத்துதுதுலே சந்திக்க வந்தேன்
ஐ வாண்ட் டு மீட் யூ எஸ்பெஷ்சிலி
என்னோடுவா
யூ கம் அட்டு மீ
Even today, there is a temple in the shape of a serpent.
Ah, and the sarpo vadival naan the koyile irukkaan.
In the temple is in the form of a serpent.
Devanukku manidhanukku laikke tekkadupade.
It will corrupt, defile the communication between God and man.
Manidhanukku laikke tekkadupade.
It will defile the communication between man and man.
Manidhanudaya tollviyay arindu, avanai vailavai padhe.
Knowing the weak points of man, he will make him fall.
Avande viswasm nambikkay anbhai tagarpade.
To destroy the faith, the love and the hope of man.
Byadi, belavinam, maranam, bayam, tollvi, vilugai, ivanudaya ayyathangai.
His weapons are the sickness, death, fear of death and failures.
Ivanudaya pidiilirundu, viduvikkumudiyagathaan, andhavarakey esu krishthu, manidhanay teedintha bhumile vandhar.
In order to deliver him, deliver man from the clutches of the Satan, Lord Jesus came in the form of man upon this earth.
Andhreke edain thodathile, manidhan vilundevutthan.
On that day, in the garden of Eden, man fell.
Andhreile irundu avande satanudaya singasanaam in the bhumile, megavum valamayagasthaa bikkapattuvutthade.
From that day onwards, the throne of Satan has been established well upon this earth.
Manidhan devanudaya singasanaate kuritha ariveya attu ponnan.
Man has lost the understanding about the throne of God.
Allarum paavam sayidhu deva magimay athsvaralakipponaarakai.
All had sinned and lost the glory of God.
Appadipattam manidhanay meetkumudiyagave, marubadiam singasanaatekku kondusellumbudiaga, andhavarakey devan thandu yasundakkumarney in the bhumile anuppinan.
In order to redeem man and take him to his glorious throne, God the Father sent his only begotten son into this earth.
Andhavarakey esu krishvay viswasi kaadavanake, marumile singasanaam illai.
The one who doesn't believe in Lord Jesus Christ will not have the throne in eternity.
Vanathtilum bhumilelum sagala jadiyelilum rachikappadumbadi, esuvi naamame allamal, weeru oru naamam katleedappadavillai.
For the salvation of men, in the heaven and the earth, upon the earth, in the midst of men, no other name apart from the name of Jesus has been commanded.
Vanathin keele, bhumien meele, manidhan jadiyilukulle, esu krishvinaamame allamal, weeru oru naamamukkatleedappadavillai.
Apart from the name of Jesus, no other name has been commanded for the salvation of man in the midst of the nations upon the heaven or the earth.
Endamanidhanay prakashipikirantha mayana oli, endamanidhanudaya walvil prakashitthado, avanukku maatharamay singasanaam.
Whomsoever is the life brightened by this true light will have the throne.
Indrekin gude, avande singasanaam sthaabikappadurukarade.
Even today, his seat is established.
Anegar kettiranga, satanukki vila buriyapavaran.
Many people are asking, why Satan is having so much power?
Na modhalavide chunnan, avanukken enna valamaygalan irundichacha.
I already told you what, what much of power he had.
Evalavu sakthi irundhunnaan chunnan.
How much strength he had.
Avanak keela talinara, ananavallamay avanukki irukkarade.
He was thrown down, but still he has the same power.
Ipo oru payyan padikira, avan nalavathile ariveya teriiviran, edho oru thavaru pannumbulu, avande certificate purakani kappadukarade.
A person studies well, but in exam he commits something wrong and his certificate is rejected.
Avanukke andhasa certificate thalalethavara, andhariveya nyanam buddhilan avanandakulavandhirukarade.
Even though the certificate has been rejected unto him, he had learnt all these things, the knowledge, understanding is in his mind.
Adiboalan, andhasa satan vilundhalo, avanukkuri andhakthi galan avanukulay irukkaranaada, mulu moochodukriyasekara.
Even though, in the same way, Satan had fallen because he is having the same strength and power, he is working with the full force.
Ivanudaya thuraitthanangaliyum adiharangaliyum urindukundu, esu krishsasiluvayale veliyarangamana golemaki, siluvayale vettisiranda.
And Jesus Christ overcame, making manifest all the powers and principalities.
Indrekkum anegar kudumbangaliyam avan singasanaam poda aasipadukarad.
Even today, in many families, he wants to place his seat.
Na sala vasanangal ungalukku munbaha vekkiran.
I want to place certain verses before you.
Nengal yaara gerundhalu paravaiyile.
Whomsoever you may be.
Ongulde vedigalile avande singasanaa irukka illaane, nengalai ipo checkpanni murschala.
You yourself can check whether you have the throne of Satan in your home or not.
Sugar kudiirka, koranjirka, nene, veeetlerne, nengi checkpannikiringa.
At home, you check your diabetes level.
Ah, adiboalai ipa vasanang kakkumode, ipa checkpannila, onga faithamla endasingasanaa iruke, onga veeetle endasingasanaa iruke, onga purushantte endaavi irukkunna kandipuchivige.
When you, when you examine in the light of the verses quoted now, you can find out which Satan, where the Satan's seat in your home.
Satanudaya singasanaam unwalvil irundhal, naan chollukarachila karangalile, sala amshangal onakul irukka koodum.
If the throne of Satan is in your life, the Satan of the things I mentioned will be found in your life.
Adi irundhal, avanudaya singasanaam irukkarade, illaavudhal avanudaya aargay irukkarade, illaavudhal avanudaya valamayay onakulay sthaabikka prayasa padukiran, enbadhe nengal vellangi kulla ventam.
If those things are found in you, you should understand that, he is having his throne in you, or he is having his dominion in you, he is having his principality in you, or he is having a power over you.
Sagariya muna madhikaram.
Zakaria third chapter.
Ah, modalay irundru muddru vasanangale naan parkumbulade.
First two, three verses if you read.
Naan chollukarapoint ellamay, sadarnamana varalukalai, avikurivalekullapointe chollukarane.
I am not telling the things which are not for others, I am telling this for spiritual people.
Oru avikuriyamanidhanake, ivalavu thakkadal irukkunna, olakathalirukkana manishanake, ivalavu idavata pathipurukunna, nengi pakannam.
If a spiritual person is facing so much attack from Satan, you can imagine how much more the men in the world are being affected.
Singasanaanone, paravathulule singasanaanu, modalay yirukkarasingasanaatthala, clearpanada, aduthasingasanaanukka reekam.
A throne doesn't mean you can go straight to the throne in heaven, you have to clear all other thrones in your life, then only you will get the throne in heaven.
Ivanudaya pathipunamakulay irukkunna, orakku, nama andhasingasanaatekku pogumudiyage.
As long as we are having that effect of Satan in us, we cannot go to that throne.
Ah, pachamarathuke endapadu, naa patamarathuke ennapadu.
If this green tree is being affected so much, how much more the dry tree.
Sagariya modalay muddra madhikarathile parkumbulade.
In Zakaria third chapter.
Pradhana asarianagiye yosu avay enakkavarkanbittar.
There, it is written, he showed me Joshua the high priest.
Kaththade thoodanakku munbaha avan nintrukundirindhan.
He was standing before the angel of God.
Satan avanukkurodhan cheyya, avan valadu bakketale nintraan.
Satan was standing at his right hand to resist him.
Namapakkaradu oru sadarnay israel puttaranalla.
We are not seeing an honorary Israelite.
Avan oru asari, sadarnay asarianumilla.
He was not an honorary priest also.
Avan oru pradhana asarian.
He was the high priest.
Anaa avanudaya lifele, nengi pathingana, sidele innoru effect nikke, oru sakthi nikke.
If you see his life, there is another effect, another power standing on his side.
Kaththare unudaya valadu bakketale, nee vaittirukkavendhi thavaasiyam.
It is necessary to keep the Lord at your right hand.
Anaa indhpradhana asarianakku valadu bakketale, satan nirkran.
But here Satan is standing at the right hand of the high priest.
Yepo chance karechali, engenala, avanukti tingu sayenangarade, avanudaya policy.
His policy is to harm this man whenever he finds a chance.
Indreki nengal ungalile oru sala chollukaragale, edho oru valamayene follow pandhendin chollukarade.
Some of you are telling, some power is following after me.
Na padukkumode, adu onarra.
When I lie down to sleep, I feel it.
Yem veeetle, adu crosspandradu onarra.
I feel it is crossing my home.
Ennday payanathale oru sakthi onarukarane.
In my journey, I feel it.
Idu onakuttiengasayumudiyaga, onne follow pandra oru sakthi.
It is a power that is following after you to harm you.
Karanau unudiyalakkele, sala alukkana kandakal irukkarade.
Because there are certain filthy rags found in your life.
Ah, ennday needigalallama, alukkana kandakal endri, esaiyathirikathrisi chollukarane.
Isha the prophet says, all our righteousness are filthy rags.
Avanudaya singasanaam irundha, avanukku dey irupan.
If he is having a throne, he will be with you.
Vaipu kerekamodo, onne thattiirwa.
When he gets a chance, he will make you fall.
Avande conceptenna?
What is his concept?
Ni yaara gerundhalu paravaiyile.
Whomsoever you may be.
Tollvi irukkumaanala, onakuttiengasayumudiyam.
If there is a failure in you, he can harm you.
Adi yaarana, avanukku pachapadangadaya.
He is not respect of persons.
Enga av tollvi irukko, enga alukki irukko, enga soyayirukko, anga avanithakke, avyenge faithamliyarundhalo, avanithakkaradu kandhakthi faithamkullayavarukarade.
Where there is failure, where there is filth, where there is defeat, he is having the power to affect the person even in faith homes.
Evalavu nirpandamana unnalavaran, paranga.
What a righteous state.
Kaththade samukthale vandni kumdu, andhavallamay avanodu kuda vandni nirkrarade, ipa indukudhal, ettenavirukpinala, enna annanikke, nee, ongulke teriyam.
When he was standing in the presence of God, this evil power was standing at his right hand, even in this meeting you are seated here, you yourself know what powers are standing behind you.
Onenalaahamay iruvatiyondru onray parkumbulade.
First book of Chronicles, twenty first chapter, first verse.
Abhishekammanappattathaviidai oru sakthi eva arambithade.
Evil power started to provoke David, who was anointed king.
Sariyanor abhishekamattor manidhan.
He was having a great anointing.
Anaa indhavallamay vanukulay pugundu, avanaveeruviddathala thavaraana karangalay cheyya, eva arambithade.
But this evil power entered into him and provoked him to do evil things.
Appadipattavun nalavaran paranga.
What kind of state he was in?
Adi enna thavare?
What was that wrong thing?
Janathay enna cholluvade?
He wants to number the throne of God.
Janathay ennanu, na, adukoru pramanaamiruke?
There is a law to number the people.
Adukoru balisalutha ventam.
He has to offer sacrifices.
Adukoru pramanaamiruke?
There is a law.
Indhpramanaathalam miri thunigaramaga, oru abhishekampettavanay thavaraana, vasanathukupuramana oru walkey vaala, evinadu indhakthi.
Transgressing all these laws and statutes, this evil power provoked this anointed person to do this evil doing.
Na oru patthupadininchu point, ongamunala vekkiran.
I will place ten fifteen points before you.
Ah, adhalani, yediavudhu onda, nengi paranga, eh, onga, yirukkaral, yallarakulay, edhavudhu oru point irukku, na viswasi kiran.
I think that all of you here will have at least one point in you.
Illan chunnalu, ulukulay idigam.
If you say, I don't have, you will be caught.
Indha bohboh majority, na, adhalavarmay thavara, minority varadu.
When it goes up, then points are going on, the majority will be found in that, not minority.
Enandhal oru valamay avanai follow paniite vandhate?
Because this power was following him.
Thaviidai oru sakthi evi vittade, avan thavarsaidhan, ayarakkana kana jananakal setupponaarakai.
The evil power provoked David and he did a wrong thing and thousands of people died.
Yoobu modala madhikaram.
Book of Job, first chapter.
Aray ettu vasanangale parkumbulade.
Six and eight chapters.
Andhvar kerkara, endasanakey yoobinmeel gavana vaitaayan, am, am, endre, satan badil koduthan.
The Lord asked the question, have you set your eyes upon my servant Job? And Satan said, yes.
Utthaman meel gavana vayikiran.
He is setting his eyes upon the upright.
Ah, sanmarkanukku meelagavana vayikiran.
He is setting his eyes upon the righteous.
Devanukku bayandavargal meel, avan gavana vayirukkarade.
He is setting his eyes upon the people who fear God.
Pollaapukku, pollaapukku, vilagaramanidhanay, avan gavana vayikiran.
He is setting his eyes upon the people who issue evil.
Ah, yoobu enna thavaru sayyala.
Job did not do anything wrong.
Na, nengi nanike gudadi, edhavu thavaru sinjala, da, prachanavandishina, appadi alla, thavare, ni sayyavenda, anao meel, oru valamay gavana silitikundeyirukkum.
He should not think that because he had done something wrong, this calamity came upon Job, he need not do anything wrong, still the evil power is saying you.
Onakunnestha thundupanna.
To make you encounter loss.
Appadi aynan, nee devanudaya kayilirundu, avan kayikku varunna, na, avan aasipparan.
He wants to somehow take you out of the hand of God, make you fall down from the hand of God and come in his hand.
Nengi veeetle, bha, modala madhikarathapadichuparanga.
You can read the first chapter.
Rendamadhikarathim padichuparanga.
You can read the second chapter.
Avan kerkira, avan om, omudaya kayilirukkara, adhalala, onume sayyamudiyala?
He is telling that Job is in your hand, that's why I cannot do anything to him.
Odane andhvar chollukarade.
Immediately the Lord says.
Avanukkundanadala, onkayil kodukkarenar.
All that he has are in thine hand.
Andhakthar kadacha odane, avan kayilakadacha, andhathuppligalinkonudan.
When he got that power, immediately he killed the ten children.
Adu maadu, aisuri, ellathiyadutthan.
He killed the sheep, the ox and the camels, everything.
Thirma andhavutthu vandikakira.
Once again, he came to God and asked.
Avar chunnar, enna, onal, enna, enna, pandamudidhude, avanbar asayamal irukkarana.
What you are able to do, he is unmoved.
Nengi avanathodaadukkutaimgeenaka, chance kodukkala.
You give me chance to touch him.
Idu, avan onkayilirukran, pranani thappavudinsunna.
Still, the Lord said, he is in your hand, but let him live.
Bayangaramana vyadi avanithakke.
Terrible sickness affected him.
Ah, avanudaya gavana, utthamargal meel.
And his eyes are upon the upright.
Viswasthatla, bayangaramaga, porathathesandikirirla.
Are you finding great fight in the faith?
Avande singasana onakuradhamai poradukarade.
His throne is working against you.
Avande thakkadal, onakuradhamai ellumbirukkarade.
His attack has come against you.
Adutha dakh, modala thoslonikirala parkumbulade.
When you turn to first Thessalonians.
Irundamadhikaram, patinetta vasanathale.
Second chapter, eighteenth verse.
Paul oru buriyay uuliyam cheyya aasippadudhar.
Paul wants to do a big ministry.
But andhuliyavala cheyyave mudiyala.
But he was not able to do that ministry.
Kadaisila nirupathile ellumbudu chollukarar, satan ennay thadai panninana.
Finally, in the epistle, he says, the Satan had forbidden me.
Uuliyam cheyya aasayundu, vaipugalay thedugiran, myersheyedugiran, oru buriyapostalan, valamay vayindha devanudaya manidhan, devanay mugamugamaga uuliyinmulaamai sandikiravan. Anaal, avanukku oru porathamrundhade, avan ninacha uuliyathay sayyave mudiyala.
He was a great apostle, he had seen the Lord in a great light, and he was a great apostle, having a great power, having great faith, but still, he was not able to work against that power that was working against his ministry.
Thandudaya singasanaatin valamayay bayanbaduti, avan andhuliyathay sayyamudiyamadi, thadai panninanandre, paulay arikyapannukarade.
Paul himself confesses that Satan used his throne, power of his throne, and forbidden him from doing the ministry.
Mathayupathinara madhikarathay parkumbulade.
Matthew's Gospel, sixteen chapter.
Iruvatiyirundru, iruvatiyamundru vasanangale.
Twenty-two and twenty-three.
Esu krishpaadubadale kurithupesa arambithar.
There, Jesus started to speak about loving the suffering.
Pradhana asariana, pradhana apostolaki, Pediruvanthan.
The chief apostle, Peter, came there.
Andhavare, omakkupidi sambhavika kodada.
Oh Lord, this should not happen to you.
Appadi oru sambhavan nanandana, na, 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 munki kamattain.
Yeah, if this happens unto you, I cannot withstand it.
Neer paadubadakudade.
You should not suffer.
Indhvaathaya kettadoni, esu chunnan, appalai po satanay chunnan.
Immediately on hearing this word, Jesus said, get thee behind me, Satan.
Krishthu kaaga paadubadakudade, endraga podagam, satanudaya podagam.
The preaching of Satan is the preaching saying, you should need not suffer for Christ.
Krishthuva walkey sugabagavalkay alla, adu siluvay paday.
The Christian life is not a comfortable life, is the path of cross.
Yepo paadubadakudadungera, oru mind onakulavandricho, andhreke, onakulay satanudaya adikka venduvutthade.
When we have the mind not to suffer, that means the reign of Satan has come in you.
Adu kudumbathilum sari, unudaya velasthalathilum sari, uuliyathilum sari, indreki paadubadakudadungera concepte, nee acceptpanitiyo, andhreki satanudaya singasana onakul sthaabikappaduvutthade.
Whether it be in your family or in your working place, on your church, where you, where you are not ready to suffer, that means the throne of Satan has been established in you.
Mark nineka madhikaram, patinanga vasanathay parkumbulade.
Mark Gospel, fourth chapter, fourteenth verse.
Indhavallamay vasanathay eduthupodukarade.
This power takes away or plucks out the word of God.
Oru manidhanukulay vedekyappattavasanathay, adu eduthukolukarade.
It is takes, takes away the word of God which has been shown in a man.
Pressangan kakkumode, remba interestarugam.
When we hear the message, it is so interesting.
Anaa, konjanertal, andhvasanathay eduthruwa.
But after a while, it is taken away.
Mark nineka, patinayindhalile, nengi ethaparkumudiyam.
You can read about that in Mark four fifteen.
Ah, iruvayangalile vedekyappattavasanathay, andhasa satan eduthupodukarad.
Satan cometh immediately and takeeth away the word that was shown in their hearts.
Kakkumode, onga mindakolapiirwa.
When you hear, your mind will be confused.
Ah, ipakuda, avande adikka thala, nengal ukkandukundirundhal, indhpressanga onakulay velasayyadu.
Even now, if you are in his power, this message will not work in you.
Enandha, andhvasanathavay edhukittayirpa.
Because he will take away this word.
Ipo yoschuparanga, avande adikka, ivalavu ungalay walkeyle prathiblikkara.
Now you think about this, how much his attack or his influence is in your life.
Namakenniki, satrundiyavallamayath thiriella.
We, today, we do not understand about the power of Satan.
Modalavudi, edhiriya, nengasolabama kanakupodakudade.
First, you should not underestimate your enemy.
Ah, esuvi naamatala po, abhinnona poiruvan, nunchirakudade.
You should not think that, in the name of Jesus, flee away Satan, immediately he will go.
Avanithoratharudhu orubhadiiruke?
There is a way of casting him out.
Ah, avanali keredhu orubhadiiruke?
There is a part of destroying him.
Thorathinal varuwan, alithal, ali ban.
If you cast him out, he will come back again, if you destroy him, he will be destroyed.
Pisasigalay thorathuvirgalan cholliruke, pisasinkriyala, alikkumudi devakumaran veripattarindum jollirukarane.
It is written, they cast away that evil spirit, in other place it is written, the son of man was revealed to destroy the works of Satan.
Naan avande adikka, avande singasanaatin sakthi, ungalay walvil, uuliyathil irukkarada, enbadhe sutikandikundurukarane.
I am telling you whether the influence or the power of Satan, the seat of Satan is found in your life or ministry.
Indhasingasanaam clearakada, bachatthale, chalappadada bachatthale, innoru singasanaatekku onakiragadaya.
If you are not throwing away this throne from your life, you will not get a place in the another throne.
Adutha dakh, nam, Luca, patimundra madhikaram, aravasanathale.
In Luke's Gospel, thirteen six.
Patinara vasanathale.
Sixteenth verse.
Ange oru pen, kattappattirundaai.
There a woman was bound.
Esu chunnan, satan kattirundindhastri enduchunnan.
And there, Jesus said, Satan has bound this woman.
Patinettu varunamaga, sala belavinathin valamaygal, andhappennay kattiveithirundhade, aulde spinal cord kooniyagamma, koonagamariyirundhad.
Eighteen years, Satan had bound her spinal cord and it was bent, she had become a bent woman, bowled down.
Ellumbulakulay vyadi irukkalam.
You may have sickness in your bones.
Indhasthayathinmudhi nimindanukumudiyamal, tadumari kundurukkalam.
And you may not be able to stand upright for the truth and stumble.
Indhaketnaver, ungalay walkeyle, indhasa satanudaya kattigalay onarukirigai.
How many of you find the binding of Satan in your life?
Ungalala, vanchipirgal, anaal, ungalal mudiyadu.
You desire so much, but you are not able to live.
Appadi, analsatanaudaya kattu, onakulay balathirukkarade.
That means, the Satan had bound you and sitting over you.
Luca, iruvatiyirundramadhikaram, patthi oravasanathay parkumbulade.
In twenty-two thirty-one of this Gospel of Luke.
Satan sulaginal podakiran.
Satan is shifting with the sift.
Indhakaneegar viswasiyala podakiradu, namu parkala.
You can see that many of the believers being shifted.
Indhakaneegar po, avande solagala ulundhranga.
Many people fall in his sift.
Pediruvipathi, andhvar chunnan, onne solaginal podakke, endhathal, adihara, uttaravu ketukundan.
And unto Peter, Jesus said, Satan asked permission to sift you like me.
Naanunudaya viswasa olindubohadabadi, unakkaavendikundan.
But I prayed for you so that your faith may not fail.
Ettenavir, indreki podakkeppadukirigai?
How many of you are being shifted today?
Ettenavir satanaal podakkeppadukundurukirigai?
How many of you are being shifted by Satan?
Anaa, aalum devanudaya kirubai, namai pathigathukundu varukkarade.
But still, the grace of God has preserved us.
Luca, iruvatiyirundru muddhile, judasukul satan pugundan.
In twenty-two three, we read, Satan entered into Judas.
Andhupugundasakthi, avanay kadaisila, nitthi jivanuka abatharanai machivutthade.
That is power that entered into him, made him finally unworthy of the eternal life.
Orathal, avanukul pugundan enduchulirukkarade.
In one place, it is written, he entered into him.
Orathal, esu chollukarar, ungalil oru van pisasai irukkaran enduchunnan.
In another place, Jesus says, one of you is the devil.
Andhupugundavallamay, avanay pisasavay machivutthara.
And the devil that entered into him had made him the devil himself.
Evalavu vegamaga, avande walkeye machivutthadundu paranga.
You see how quickly that power has changed his life?
Evalavu nirpandamana oru nalavaram.
What a righteous state.
Yooban, aru, aramadhikaram, yelvata vasanathale, idhiparkala.
John's Gospel, six seventy, you can read.
Ange cholliruk, ungalilum oru van pisasai irukkaran.
One of you is a devil.
Oru vadakkul satan pugundhal, avanay satanakave machivutthukaran.
If a person, if a devil enters into a man, he is making that person into a devil.
Apostle, aindhamadhikarathay parkumbulade.
In Acts of Apostle, fifth chapter.
Ah, muna vasanathale, ananya safiraalde irudhetai, satan nirappi poisolla vaitan.
In third verse, we read that, the Satan filled the hearts of Ananiah and Safira and made them to lie.
Naan cholluraa, aalangala, sadarnaalagalekida.
I am not telling about ordinary people.
Yellam biblela, remba top classla irundavangara.
All were in the scriptures in top class.
Evalavu nir, anaal, averlikuradhamai, in the valamay poradukarade.
But these powers were striving, evil powers were striving against them.
Enna vandhal, avangesingasanaatekku poiruvangan thiriyon, anaal, thanudaya singasanaatevaittha, adai modukarade.
And the power, evil power knows that they will go to throne, that's why he is fighting with his power.
Enandhangorindhir, panirindhamadhikaram, yela vasanathay parkumbulade.
Second Corinthians, twelve chapter, seventh verse.
Apostolaki, paul chollukarade, yan, sarirathal oru mulle iruke, adu satan ennekutthum thoodanai irukkaradun chunnan.
Apostle Paul says, there is a throne given in my flesh, it is the angel of Satan to prickle me.
Oru bakthal, niruma elavikundeyirukkarade.
On one side, he is writing the epistles.
Sabegal, uridipattukundeyirukkarade.
And the church is being established.
Anasarirathal oru mulle.
But there is a throne given in the flesh.
Adakurithu, paul chollukarad, satan ennekutthu, satanudaya thooda, ennekutthukar, satanudaya thoodanai irukkaradun chunnan.
It is written there, the messenger of Satan to buffet me.
Ettenavir, indhakutthalirukkarade?
How many of you are having it in your?
Oru bakthala, spiritual shining, innor bakthala, bataivakutikidaya kara.
On one side, spiritually shining, on the other side, Satan is buffeting them.
Ettenavirudaya sarirathal, indhmulkutikundurukkarade.
In how many people's body, the flesh, this throne is pricking.
It is avanudaya singasanaathinudaya kadirgai.
It is the.
Singasanaathinudaya race.
And the race of his throne.
Ah, yosuthuparanga.
You just think about this.
Ongalil ettenavir, ipadipattatakkalukulay sikirukkire.
How many of you are caught in the attack of the Satan?
Indhmodalaam kootathale, avande singasanaam ennekodakkeporo.
In the first meeting itself, we will break down his throne.
Velipattal, irundu onbathile, du shikiramandu chollappadukarade.
In the second chapter, ninth verse of the book of Revelation, he is called as a blasphemer.
Mark one, patimundre, thundubavan enduchulirukkarade.
Mark one thirteen, he is called as.
Sodipavan enduchulirukkarade, sodipavan.
He is the tempter.
Sodanikaran.
The tempter.
Onakudaili parikshai.
He will be tempted daily.
Oru prachanamunjamuna, adutha prachana.
When one problem ends, another problem.
Edhali avadu, ni sikkuvayay, enbadha, avande kanipu.
He is trying to beguile you, entangle you in some problem.
Nala avikuriyapurushan manavikulay pugundu thundra.
And it will provoke between good spiritual husband and wife.
Ah, nala avikuriyakudumbangalukulay pugundu, maamsathay thundubunukarane.
And in between the spiritual husband and wife, he will create carnality.
Onnukurindhir, yel, endhalile, indhvaathay chollappadukarade.
It is written in first Corinthians, seven five.
Satan ungalay thundukran.
Satan is provoking you.
Apostle, iruvatiyarla, patinettala parkumbulade, satan onmeel adiharam saygaran.
Acts of Apostle, twenty-six, chapter eighteen, verse, Satan is ruling over you.
Idaitan, kolosier, one, patimundre, paul chollukaral, eerulin, adiharam.
Colossians one thirteen, Apostle Paul says, the power of darkness. I have told you 15 points. Just consider now. These are not honorary people. One was the high priest. One was the appointed king. One was upright. One was apostle. One was apostle. One was the chief apostle. One who heard the message well. And a woman who went to eighteen years unto synagogue. A man who said, "I will die for you." And a man who took the offering bag behind Jesus. And the persons who want to sell their position and place it in the feet of the apostles according to the law of equality. A man who met God, met the Lord through the light. And the Corinthian church which was awaiting in the good spiritual life, the coming of the Lord. But all these people faced this temptation and trial. Because they were all destroyed for that throne. They were able to overcome and be seated with Jesus in the throne of the Father. That was not acceptable unto Satan. That's why, to do some harm. Somewhere to make him die. Some failures. Make them to lie. Bring weakness in them. Make them blaspheme. Take away the word of God. These are the powers of the throne of Satan. But what does apostle Paul say? First Corinthians 3rd chapter. You are the temple of God. The Satan should not have his seat in the temple of God. When Jesus went to the temple. There, the people selling the dowels were sitting, seated on the seat. The Lord Jesus sanctified the temple, overthrowing the seats of the people. The Lord says, "I will overturn, overturn, overturn thrice." Dear brother, dear sister, in your life, is the effect or influence of Satan's throne seen in your life? In which church you are seen? Which throne of Satan is surrounded in your church? There were people who were caught in the throne of Satan in the church in Bergamas. There were people who dwelt in the place where Satan was dwelling. Beloved, the whole world is in his hand. He is called as the prince of this world. Even today, his powers are striving against the holy church of God. In the midst of strife, there are people who are destroyed for the throne of God. What happened? The Lord spoke saying that even though you are in a place where Satan's seat is, you are holding fast unto my name. I see you have not denied the faith. Today, you get hold of the name of God. There is salvation in the name of Jesus. There is strength and healing in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus, evil spirits will flee. In the name of Jesus, if you pray, you will receive. In the name of Jesus, miracles and wonders will be wrought. The name of Jesus is holy. If you follow the name of Jesus, you will have eternal life, you will have the throne. Beloved, how many of you are caught in the throne of this Satan? I am asking you now.